Called order to city council work session for C D V's grand first Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021 is now five o'clock. The city clerk please call roll.
Mayor Steve Andrew?
Here.
Vice President Mark Holstein?
Here.
Vice President Henry Club?
Here.
Council members, Grant Gutter?
Here.
Bill Hanks?
Here.
Tim Johnson?
Here.
Martin Mertz?
Present.
Brian Larson?
Here.
Those term quorum number one discussion on request to waive specials on parcel number eight, three dot zero, four, two, four, nine dot zero, zero. Ms. Nelson?
I'll just stand right here. Um, this you guys have seen the the request on this parcel before. A few years ago, somebody requested to waive all the specials. At that time you were not interested. Somebody requested to have half the specials waived. You were not interested. This is a parcel that has when tax forfeiture is for sale at the county for $10,000 and we currently have about a little over $51,000 in special assessments remaining on it. I was contacted last week by a gentleman who is interested in purchasing the lot and wanted to make the request to see if the council at this time would be interested in waiving all the special assessments. If not, he was wondering what your best offer would be. So I guess. And I do believe he is watching tonight. He was not able to be here or but he I do know that or he said he was gonna try and watch the meeting, so.
And I think the best recollection is that we decided last time to if we wanted the whole, all the specials paid. I think that was.
Okay.
Males can correct me on that, but I think that was our stance and I think it's a tough pill to swallow if you want to waive any specials and spread that over to the whole rest of the city. I think we need to get them paid, but it's my own opinion.
Okay.
Anybody else have any opinion?
Okay. If that is the consensus, I'll make sure he is aware and we'll go from there.
A review of bid results for 2021 city project number one, Safe Routes to School. Mr. Emery?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. Counsel, so we opened bids for the Safe Routes to School sidewalk project on Tuesday, March 16th. We did receive three bids. The apparent low bidder is actually Hovland Incorporated, actually out of Herman Town, Minnesota. Um, as you probably saw there, kind of on the bid tabulation, um, they did come in about 22,600, um, you know, below my estimates. So I do think we did, you know, get a, a good, a good bid there. Um, I have not worked with, um, this contractor in the past, so I have requested, um, references of, you know, similar projects they've completed, just like kind of do a little bit of background work. Um, before, I guess the council, city council meeting on April 6th, um, also the contractor was required, the apparent low bidder was required to submit, um, a bunch of D B A, D B E paperwork and such to the Office of Civil Rights. They did get that submitted yesterday, so, um, I'm assuming within the next week or so, we will hear back, um, in regards to that if, if everything, you know, on their bid, if they met all the good faith efforts, that type of stuff, um, if, if that all meets standards. So I guess with that, again, we will be receiving some safe routes to school grant, uh, monies for this project. And then, you know, the balance, I'm assuming we'd probably look at taking out of our state aid maintenance funds. So I guess at this time, you know, I really don't have any recommendation just because, you know, we can't, um, well, it's got to go to council to make formal award. But I do need, do need to make sure too that Office of Civil Rights and, and that stuff is all clear too before we could ever award. So I'm hoping to have all of that stuff in place by the April 6th meeting and, you know, make a recommendation at that time. So I guess I don't know if you guys have any specific questions for me in regards to, you know, any of the information I provided?
Larson?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Um, Mr. Emery, looking at the comparison of the bid items here, is, um, is there any specific bid items where Hovland is, is so low, you're concerned that, um, they don't fully understand the scope of work being contracted?
No, I think in review of the, you know, the bid results, I didn't see anything that really just jumped out at me as, you know, let's say, like them not understanding what they were bidding. Um, I thought that, that part looked fine. Um, it is always a challenge on these unit price bids. A lot of times too, when you, you know, you start comparing unit prices between contractors, it, it can be, you know, challenging just where, you know, contractors may put their money sometime. So, but I guess to answer your specific question, no, I did not see anything that, you know, jumped out at me that I would really be concerned with.
Okay, thank you. It'll be, um, interesting to hear how the references check out. Uh, these guys are coming in from the iron range essentially. I think that's where.
Yeah, it's out of Herman Town.
Herman Town. Um, they've, they've got travel and hotels and per diem and all that in this cost and they're still significantly lower.
Yeah.
So I, I think trust but verify.
I think their bidding was a four inch concrete.
And I did see, um, I did see, oh, I'm sorry. I did see in their bid, they are using some local contractors, it looks like, for doing some earthwork and that type of stuff. So.
Anybody else have any questions? See none, sir?
Thank you.
Number three, consider finding plans and specifications for the 2021 city project number two, trail improvements. Mr. Emery?
Thank you again, Mr. President. Um, again, um, just provided kind of for your information, kind of a preliminary set of plans, um, of where we're at on the trail improvement project. Again, at this time, we're not 100% complete, but kind of give you an idea. Um, again, the project we're looking at overlay basically starts at the stoplights, um, by first, going all the way down to the south pedestrian bridge. And then there was kind of two spur lines that came off of that that we're also looking at overlaying. Um, I think as Reed reported last time, you know, we're looking at probably using greenway maintenance funds and probably some general fund dollars to help pay for this project. So I will be looking to file the plans and specs at the April 6th meeting. And then we've actually looking at setting a bid date at this time at, uh, for April 27th. So again, just kind of gave you everything where we're at and see if you have any specific questions for me at this time.
Anybody else have anything? Mayor?
Thank you for proactively maintaining these trails. We do have such a nice feature running every which way through our city. And if we keep it up with normal maintenance, it's gonna last for many, many years. Of course, anytime you get a, a crack that starts to form and the water goes in and freeze thaw and it starts to open up and, and pretty soon it gets underneath there and we know what can happen. So, um, I know there are stretches of trail just like this one that really need this attention. I, some of it hasn't been touched probably in 20 years or so. And so to just schedule it out like you are and then just one piece at a time. And maybe from time to time, there'll be some new construction that'll have to go in. We know that as certain areas open up where there's some interest. But taking care of, of that, that asset is a big deal. And again, I thank you for getting ahead of it as you are.
Anybody else have anything? See none, sir? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Number four, discussion on 2020 city project number four, street and ADA improvements. Mr. Emery?
Okay, thank you. Um, again, this is our project on Demers Avenue and Business Highway Two. Um, we are currently scheduled to open bids on that project on April 6th. Um, since the time that MINDOT even did their plan review, um, you know, now they're kind of coming back and, um, saying there's some of these costs, there are some of these bid items that are, um, what they're referred to as a city share. The city would be responsible for picking up that cost. And even since I put together this R C A, um, I've thrown out a couple more items too that MINDOT may not participate in cost on. But a couple of the, you know, what I'd call the simple ones, which, you know, don't see too much of a deal, were just the salvage and install signage, um, with some no parking signs, two hour parking signs, um, that just, you know, what the construction need to be removed and kind of replaced upon completion of construction. Um, maybe, you know, again, $1,000 worth of work. We had the adjust bell box water, um, you know, again, 200, $250 worth of work, you know, nothing too major. The big ones were, um, right now, we're on Business Highway Two, kind of on the west side of Fort there. We're gonna remove and replace that, that sidewalk and the pavers there. And MINDOT is kind of coming back and saying that they will not pay for the, the brick pavers, um, which, you know, I've kind of argued that they, you know, there's currently pavers there. So we're really not, you know, making a betterment, making any improvements, that type of stuff. But I've, you know, unfortunately, I think I'm losing the battle. Um, MINDOT's got their guidelines of what they'll pay for and, you know, pavers are one thing that they just, you know, will not pay for. So I guess just want to have discussion with you tonight, um, because I may have to put out an addendum to address some of these potential changes. Um, so I guess want to have discussion with you and, and just kind of see, you know, what does the city want for improvements in that area? You know, do we want to just go all concrete from back a curb to back a sidewalk? You know, we could do a, you know, in that four foot furniture zone, we could do a colored concrete, maybe a colored stamped concrete. Again, I think MINDOT would pick up the cost for just regular concrete and the city would be responsible for, um, you know, the cost of coloring the concrete and or stamping it. And the other thing, um, I did talk to a MINDOT rep today, he was gonna do some checking, is I asked about the possibility if, if we wanted to just put the brick pavers back in, you know, if the city, you know, just picked up that, you know, whatever that additional cost is between just regular concrete and, and the brick pavers. So, so I guess, you know, I'd probably open it up there a little bit too, just for discussion and, and see what, I guess kind of see where your guys are at and maybe what you want.
Anybody have any comments on that? Mr. Larson?
Yeah, um, I had a couple of emails earlier this week as well with, uh, Mr. Emery and Mr. Stordahl. I had a few questions gathering some opinion, I guess, on what to do with this space if we lose the brick walk special, which it feels like to me that we, we will. With only four feet left, we don't really have enough space to plant trees. I think that, you know, they would be way too close to the roadway. Leaves kind of a narrow strip of grass, kind of tough to maintain. Um, so my, my opinion would be that we would fill that space with, with concrete. Um, I, I don't have a strong opinion if that concrete is, has an integral color or if there's a stamp design, I would, um, leave that to others here in the council if they have a strong opinion. But I do think concrete's the right answer there. Um, and then as far as the salvage brick pavers, I would recommend we just lose that bid item and have the contractor dispose of the pavers. I don't, I, I'm not sure why we would want to salvage all these pavers and pay for that labor. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments on that?
I did talk to Mr. Stordahl too, and, um, you know, Jason thought it would be nice to have, you know, some additional pavers just for future maintenance, that type of stuff. But he, I think his thought was too, if there's going to be additional cost associated with that, he kind of said the same thing, just have the contractor probably remove them. So I think that's probably the direction we'll go with that. Um, MINDOT still may not pay for it, but I think it's gonna be cheaper in the long run just to have the contractor, you know, scoop them up, haul them out as opposed to, you know, trying to salvage them, putting on crates, delivering them to city shops. So I think that's the direction we'll go on those, uh, the pavers. We'll just have them removed. So. Um.
Jason, did you have something or?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that we do have extra pavers at, um, at Public Works down there just for filling in areas if areas get damaged and whatnot. So we do have a couple pallets sit there already. So it isn't really a big deal that we have more. I just thought if it wasn't a cost to us, then it's always handy to have them there to repair other areas. But, you know, in this case, I think we have enough and no sense spending money on, on doing that. So.
Mayor?
Uh, Jason, if there, if there is need of them and if there's time, if you wanted to send any of our crews out to gather those, that might be an option as well ahead of the contractor?
Sure.
Mr. Emery?
And, and again, I think, you know, if, if the council decides we want to do brick pavers, I think, you know, we could look at doing brick pavers. Um, just aware that, you know, we can maybe get MINDOT to cover the cost of what that concrete would be. Um, but you would have to probably pay that, you know, kind of that upcharge to go with the pavers. So again, just, you know, need to know what the councils wish are. So if we have to issue an addendum or make any clarifications, you know, for the contractors when they bid the project, we'll have to do that in the next week or so here.
That is my personal opinion. I think aligns with Mr. Larson, just with the cement. I mean, no sense to carry in the extra cost and.
Yep. I am fine with that. Um, yeah, the only other things that came about today, um, seems like every time MINDOT calls, they're trying to pin a little more on the city here. But they had mentioned today too, the traffic control mobilization. Um, the city may be responsible just for a, a percentage of those two line items. Um, so based on whatever the city's share of the overall project cost is, if it's 10%, then the city would be potentially responsible for 10% of the traffic control and 10% of the mobilization, which at this time, I mean, I'm, I'm estimating maybe, you know, $5,000. So again, not a major deal, but I'm just kind of frustrated with, with MINDOT and kind of their whole process with this program, but we'll, I guess we'll work through it.
Anything else on that, Mr. Emery?
I have nothing.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions from Mr. Emery? If not, we'll move on. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, discussion on 2022 federal project. Mr. Emery?
Okay, uh, just kind of wanted to give you an update of, you know, what we're kind of continuing to work on here. Um, open now, we can have a lot of information ready for you for the first work session in April. And, you know, hopefully again, maybe we can select what we want to do for a project. But so right now, about a week ago, um, actually David and I had a conference call with Alliance Engineering and kind of discussed the roundabouts and, um, Alliance went back, has made some modifications. I did get something late in the day. Um, I had a quick conference call with Alliance Engineering. They're making a few more quick modifications. Um, so once I get those, I'll kind of review it with David. We can kind of look at, you know, what potentially, if there's any property acquisition acquired with, with those options. Um, and again, that's something then we'll share all of those drawings with you at the April 13th work session. Also on 10th Street Northeast, um, we're updating our estimates to include, you know, basically converting that road into, um, basically almost like, basically just coring it all, removing the pavement, the curb and gutter. We'd still like to probably replace in the sanitary sewer, um, replacing the catch base and storm sewer leads and then basically coring out the street, you know, putting a drain tile, geo grid fabric and, and a good aggregate base. So, you know, again, you'd kind of have all weather access. And then we'll just look at, again, um, kind of review. What the effects on maybe assessments and or city costs would be, you know, if we are not able to, you know, assess that railroad property on the south side. Um, I know Ron has kind of mentioned too, maybe just having more discussions potentially with American Crystal, um, just, you know, due to the fact that I think a lot of the degradation and stuff we're seeing out there with our road is because of the ponds and leakage and stuff. So. But again, try to bring more information forward for you at the April 13th work session. And then the one thing I did too, I did put in the pack is kind of a rough, uh, timeline. Um, again, just kind of noted that, you know, like the, if we could pick a project here, you know, by the end of April, which, which project we want to do. Again, if we do 10th Street, we're gonna have to amend our STIP and the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, uh, which is, you know, based on this initial discussions with Earl Logan, probably a four to five month process. Um, if we go down the road of 10th Street, you know, with that being an assessment project, we'd have to complete a report of feasibility, conduct an improvement hearing, you know, kind of showing that could be completed in May, June of this year. Um, then I just said, you know, city council to authorize with set to prepare plans and specs in June or July. Um, again, you know, that, that could float if we're looking at doing the roundabout where we don't have to, you know, maybe do the report of feasibility, improvement hearing, that type of stuff. Uh, you know, we could maybe look at authorizing, you know, us to move forward sooner. But then with either project, we will be required to do a project memorandum. Um, so I'm kind of showing we could do that June, uh, June through August of this year. Um, would not be due to our district state aid engineer actually until December 1st of 2021. And then I did put in there, um, if any property acquisition is required, um, you know, we potentially would need to have that completed by April 1st of 2022. Um, we could potentially request an extension, um, but that's something we would, I guess we kind of cross that bridge. Um, if we, you know, get into property acquisition and we're kind of working through the process, if we need some more time, we can potentially get that through MINDOT. But the big thing is, I think, uh, you know, we'd have to have plans and specifications and everything kind of approved through our district and submitted to central office by April 1st of 2022. Um, looking at a bid date at the latest again of, let's say, May of 2022. Um, because we basically just need to, I think, have the project bid, get everything authorized, awarded by the end of June of 2022. And then, you know, we could look at doing construction summer, fall of 2022, or, you know, construction can carry into, into 2023. So I don't know if that kind of helps you. I know, I think it was Mr. Demers had asked last time, just kind of for a rough timeline to, you know, kind of help you guys to, you know, make, help you in making a decision to maybe, you know, which one of these two projects ultimately we wanted to, you know, move ahead with. So, so really again, just wanted to give you some more information. Um, you know, we don't, not looking for any decisions tonight, but if there is other things that, you know, you would like to see, um, prior to that April 13th work session, you know, if there's other things you want to see to help you as a council make an informed decision, you know, please give me a call, should be an email, um, whatever. So I guess any questions?
Mayor?
I do believe you're right on track with the property acquisition question on the roundabout. Um, and that is a bit of the wild card as far as the cost factor as well as the timeline. And so if we can, I know you're getting those renderings back from the engineer, that could show probably exactly what properties would be affected. And, um, maybe we've even questioned the diameter of the roundabout, if that's the right diameter? If we haven't reconsidered that, we maybe want to make sure we're looking at that?
One thing I will, in the updated drawings now, um, if you remember option two, what we were looking at initially, it was all like 110 foot diameter roundabout where option one was 120 foot. They have switched everything to the 120 foot diameter roundabout now. So we, we are, both options show the bigger roundabout.
Okay. Um, and then as the, I think the big question is going to be, um, funding of it. If we were to look at 10th, um, the funding piece, and I don't see how we can possibly, you know, go to an industry, let's say, whether it's the railroad or American Crystal and say, you know, we'd like you to join in on this. Um, how's that look? We would need to be more specific than that. And so it's really probably a combined effort between Mr. Gallstead, Mr. Emery, um, to some way fold it into our special assessment policies that we have to really quantify what would be expected of these other businesses as a starting point. And that really initiates the negotiation to say, you know, this is what we intend to do from a special assessment standpoint. And then the conversation goes on from there. It has to have, to me, it has to have a basis as a starting point more than just a vague, you know, there, there's some shared responsibility here. So whatever you guys can do to get together and some way quantify those dollar amounts as a, as a starting point for the city, I think is a big deal if we're really talking about 10th.
Yep.
Um, and then one last thing as a slightly totally unrelated actually, but we have the right group together. Um, so Steve, Jason, Nancy, we talked about it a lot of times. Sidewalk on one side of 10th Street between 16th and James Avenue. I don't know, so, so to the question of where would it go? Um, how would you do it from an engineering standpoint? And how would you pay? If it could get into safe routes to school in one of these future go rounds, but just to keep that on the burner somewhere. Um, we're back now, we're a lot of pedestrians out. And when I'm out for a run and, and I'm coming around that corner in front of Lynn's old house and hanging a left onto 10th, I gotta hop the curb half the time for a car that's coming. And, um, so just a good idea if we could take care of that pedestrian element with the sidewalk, probably one side to start, whatever, however that looks, whichever is the easier way to do it, that would be a, a good feature, I think, for, for our city. Thanks.
Time do you usually run? What time do you usually run?
Any.
Just letting people know out there, you know.
We will all race there.
Mr. Gallstead?
Uh, Mr. President, thank you. I just wanted to, and I brought this up in the staff meeting, uh, depending upon how far this, uh, roundabout project would go, uh, for full disclosure and transparency, my sister's home is one of those houses on the eastern side of Bigland Road that could potentially be affected. And depending upon how far it goes, I may need to, uh, recuse myself or at least, uh, well, recuse myself and will have to take a, take a closer look if that comes up. But I did, I did want to make sure that everybody understood that, uh, because, uh, I didn't want to get too far down this road and then, and then, uh, have to have somebody step in. So.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have anything for Mr. Emery? If not, we'll move on.
Yeah.
Dale?
Um, might be the time to bring it up here too. Um, as long as you're talking about Mr. Gallstead, I did get an email from her, uh, very concerned about what was going on there. Um, I'm wondering on this roundabout if we could think about or maybe put some stop signs out there in the middle of Bigland Road?
Did that already.
And, uh.
I wish.
And, and, and try this out for a couple of weeks just to see, just to get an idea on stuff out there on how, I mean, rather than just going into this project and spending this money and just saying that this is gonna work, if we could do a.
Nancy, when did we do that on that road?
It, it's been a while. Um, Dick Grassel was here at the time.
[laughing]
We, we, we did put it up on, uh, Bigland and Sixth.
Last one day, was it?
It lasted a half a day. We had so many complaints in the morning, drop off and pickup because traffic was backed up so far, um, that Dick called and said, pull it. So, um, but it, that doesn't mean we can't try it. I'm just saying that's what happened before.
Yep.
So, and we, we've had stop signs further out, um, on some of, uh, the times where the point has been closed off during flood. And we've also had to remove stop signs for that, um, because it has backed traffic up considerably. that, um, because it has backed traffic up considerably. So, so I, stop signs, um, haven't worked in the past, but it's always worth a shot to try, so.
Yeah, well, I've been getting some emails from some, some residents and, and that's what they talk about a lot, four-way stops, but I know it's not going to make a lot of people happy. Uh, I was just thinking, you know, now with, with, uh, hopefully we're done with the snow removal, we don't have to deal with that, and with school going on, it's a time to really check this all out, and I just, I'm just looking for other options on this roundabout. I mean, ideas and something that, that tells me that this is what we need there, that's what I'm looking for. So that's all I, that's all I was asking if it could be done or not, so, thank you.
I, I, if we did bring up, um, stop signs, I'd vote no 100% of the time right now because it's happened in the past and I'm not going to waste time and money from Public Works and just to remove them within the same day or whatever. I'm not going to do it.
And Dale, you may not have known that it was tried, and it did, it's stacked up so far. I've been the one harping for four-way stops, and then they reminded me this was one or two years ago, uh, and Dick was a real strong proponent of trying it out, and the traffic to that end of town has only increased since then. By no means has it dropped off, it's probably increased as more homes have been built. And so as much as I, intuitively, it seems like it should work, and I'd love to see it, it was unacceptable when it was tried before. So that's how I've moved on. If it's not roundabout, I would go for a signalized intersection maybe at 13th for the access and the pedestrian, but they tell me that's not an ideal solution either. But it would certainly be a lower cost and, and may accomplish some of our objectives, um, as an interim step, but that's just me.
Mr. Repel?
I had breakfast with the county commissioner on Saturday morning, and his idea was a flashing...
Could we get, uh, could we get Mr. Repel to turn his mic on?
Sorry about that. Had breakfast with the county commissioner on Saturday morning, his idea was a flashing light. I don't think that would work, it'd be real similar to the, uh, stop sign issue. It's going to back it way, way up. Easiest thing is either leave it like it is or do the roundabout, but that's, that's the two options.
Or stop light.
Way down.
We go down into rabbit hole here. Um, anything else regarding Mr. Emery's update? Anything we want to bring up? Mr. Larson?
Mr. Emery, just a, a small comment for the record here. Um, I, I really don't want to see us bid whatever project we go forward with in May of 2022. I think we'd be missing the mark by at least three months there. So I'd encourage you to pull that schedule back. We need to try and, uh, beat Grand Forks to the bidding table for our smaller projects here. Uh, we should be planning to bid this job in February, not in May.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you 100%. Those are kind of just our drop dead deadlines with the state is what I was kind of giving you, but I, I would agree wholeheartedly. I mean, if, if we can bid it February, March, we're much better off.
January.
January's even better.
Great.
Like I said, I, I think on, on my end, um, I'm fine, I, I could get a lot of this stuff done. The only thing that would potentially hold us up, because MINDOT will not allow us to move ahead with the bidding of the project, would be the property acquisition if, if we have to acquire property. So again, from my end, for plans and specs, that type of stuff, I could easily get things done by, ready to bid by January, February, it's just, again, the property acquisition that may hold us up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Move on to number six, request to update service proposal with GLG Architects. Reed, are you still on?
Hi, guys. Yep, I'm here. Um, I'm traveling, so hopefully you guys can hear me okay. Uh, thanks, council president, council members. Just an update, uh, we have a, in the packet, a proposal from GLG Architects, really to update the service proposal we had in place, uh, starting in December of 2019. Um, for the most part, what we're looking at is the proposal's largely the same as it was that we approved a lot of time, but is, uh, um, for pre-referendum and pre-construction work to, to design on the recreation facility projects we've discussed. Uh, most of the timeline and the work is laid out as we've discussed at previous meetings, starting with as soon as this contract is executed. Um, hopefully the first part of April, we'll get GLG involved in our planning meetings with our building committee to go through programming, uh, and get a pre-designed phase laid out. Uh, so I would certainly recommend that we would approve this agreement to move forward with it. The big piece of it, uh, that I think needs some attention or some discussion potentially is, uh, for the work completed in November 2000, through November 2020, uh, when we planned to move forward with the, the potential sales tax, uh, that of course was pushed back with the pandemic, um, with, with the extension in the timeline and what we're looking at requesting GLG for their work, they've, um, asked for compensation in the amount of $14,000 for work completed in 2020. Um, and that was not, uh, not part of the initial agreement. Of course, y'all remember that the initial agreement was largely, as it remains today, in that, uh, any work that they completed would not be compensated until after a referendum was, was approved. If it was, if the, if any vote failed, uh, they would not bill us for their work. Um, upon a review of that, Mr. Murphy and I have discussed that length, uh, Mr. Gallstead has had a chance to review it too. We certainly can understand, um, the request from GLG for the compensation for the 2020 work, mainly and for the most part citing the fact that the, the project timeline has changed so drastically, we're asking them for a lot more pre-referendum, pre-service work, or I shouldn't say we're asking for a lot more, it's been extended beyond what the initial scope of work was. Um, so for that, I would recommend that we would approve the payment for the work completed in 2020 as well.
Anybody have any questions for Reed at this time? I see none, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Olson, if I can just add in one more positive comment for the evening?
Sure.
Uh, we, we heard earlier today, uh, on our Mighty Ducks grant that we, we submitted earlier this winter for the, uh, R22 retrofit at the Civic Center, that our application would be, uh, awarded in full. Uh, so that's a 50% matching grant to support, uh, the, the conversion away from R22 with the compressor at the Civic Center. Uh, the state funding would be $143,750, and then the city would be responsible for the other half. So I think that's a very exciting piece and a, a good thing to celebrate, uh, moving forward in this project.
Good, good. Thanks for the good news.
Thank you.
Ready? Not entertain a motion adjourned? Oh, Nancy, do you have something quick? Sorry.
Yes, I apologize. Um, back in 2019, I had applied for a couple of replacement buses to be scheduled in the STIP and the TIP. Um, the state did award those for '22 and '24, and Earl's asking that I, uh, get your approval, um, to put them on the TIP, um, for the next two years. I was just hoping that I could pay up an RCA and bring it to the regular council meetings so that we can get it on the April NPO agenda rather than waiting to the 13th. Does anybody have any opposition to that?
I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Entertaining motion adjourned. Moved by Mr. Repel. Second by Mr. Johnson. Home favors, the aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried, mean is adjourned.
It's going to be a really weird year.